July 6th, this is a Moscow Regular Council meeting. If those of you would please arise with me, I will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, and we have an approval of an amended consent agenda that each person received tonight. Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the change in the minutes that was provided to us this morning, or this evening.
A second. Okay, Dan made the motion to approve the consent agenda with the amended amendments on it, as John with the second, I'll start. Walters, you have a question on that?
Yes, sir, please. Stephanie, you amended the entire agenda for tonight to add the report item. Do we need to accept that change?
That will be a different one, Walter.
Okay, we don't do that first?
Not with the consent agenda, we'll do the consent agenda, then we'll do that one.
That'll be fine, then I'd vote aye on the consent agenda. Aye.
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 Okay, now, now we will move on to the regular agenda has an amendment in it, and that amendment was added to it, and what that is, is Citizen Report on Sustainable Environment Commission.
Do we need to move on that?
Yes, we do.
I'd make a motion that we accept the amended agenda for tonight.
I'll second it. Okay, Dan made a motion with Art's second on the amended agenda that would include Sustainable Environment Commission, I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay, with that, we will move on to, any staff recognition report, Gary?
I would like to note, Your Honor, that our Human Resources Director, Debbie Klein Robertson, her last day was Friday, and she's now retired in our great community, so I want to thank her for her service.
Well, terrific, and good for her. Item number three is public comment and mayor's response period, and I'm going to have Gary reading our special guest tonight, Mike Smith, has gave us a message that Gary's going to help present.
Okay, I want to thank Mike Smith, he has an announcement to make tonight, that on July 25th, 2015, there will be a picnic celebrating the 1992 signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The picnic starts at 12 o'clock on July 25th in East City Park, and will go until 3 o'clock that afternoon.
From 1 to 3?
Noon.
Noon to 3.
Thank you so very much, Mike, for bringing that to our attention.
Says "thank you."
Okay, thank you, Mike, you're very welcome, buddy. Would you put that back there in his backpack, Gary, thank you so much. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay, additional...
Gary, you may need to get that door.
Absolutely. Oh, he's a...
He can do it.
He can get through there. He said "no." Full speed, Mike.
Good night, thank you so much, Mike, you have a good evening.
Whoop.
There he goes.
Famous last words.
He's gonna make it.
He made it.
Okay, additional public comment this evening. Okay, with that, we are going to move on to Citizens Commission Report, Sustainable Environment Commission, Tom Skalorn will present, please. Hi, Tom, how are you this evening?
Fine. I would like to introduce Steve McGeehan, who will be actually, Chair of the Commission, who will actually be doing the report. Steve?
Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. All right, Jim, you promised me this is going to work, so I'll give it a shot here. Is she there? The AV button.
We got to have an on button, Steve.
Where was the AV button? Oh, that one, that's right. Too many remotes, I have the same problem at home. There we go. There we go. Perfect, all right, thanks. I told you not to. All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight, representing the Sustainable Environment Commission, and providing an update on our activities for the last year. First, I'd like to start with a brief review of the mission statement, it's a bit wordy, but the general idea is to solicit advice and information about sound environmental management practices for promoting public health and safety for the citizens of Moscow. And really, the way I look at it is, we answer and do the bidding for the mayor and the city council, we get ideas for topics and things like that, that we should look into, provide advice, we have technical expertise, or if we don't, we know where to find it, and then we also are responsive to citizens as well, that may have questions, concerns, and things like that, we look into it and report back. And what I'd like to spend just a brief few minutes is going through some of the topics and issues we looked into over the past year. First off, probably one of the bigger projects we worked on over the year was a review of the Water Conservation Plan. This has been a very recent topic for the council, I know there was a workshop last Wednesday, if I remember correctly. Nicole Baker was the key person working on this draft, and was very conscientious, as you all know, this report is quite detailed, and Nicole visited the Sustainable Environment Commission several times, probably starting back in November, she would come present ideas, we're not short on opinions and advice, and so we gave her quite a bit, and really the idea was how to sift through this very large, very detailed document, point out areas where we had questions, that we felt other people might have questions, and also areas of concerns, gaps, and things like that. And so, this draft that you saw, number three, last Wednesday, was a result of quite a few iterations. Nicole was very patient with our questions, not only of the commission, but as I'll point out towards the end of the presentation, we have quite a few citizens that attend the meetings, and they had questions and comments as well. So, this was one we were particularly proud of, as you all know, particularly with the weather we've had this summer, water is a key issue on the Palouse, and I was glad to see comments not only from the workshop and council, but certainly came up at our meetings. This conservation plan buys us some time, but certainly does not solve the water problems, and that was a comment that we certainly wanted to put forward as we, you know, put our two cents behind this report. So, kudos to Nicole for doing a great job, and I'm looking forward to seeing this plan go forward. Another big issue this year in the city of Moscow was the adoption of the Single Stream Recycling Plan, and we asked Tim Davis to come give a presentation at the SEC, he did so, and another very patient person, he answered lots of questions, people have strong feelings about recycling in the city, and certainly the commission members did as well, we were quite happy to see the response that Tim gave, and again, very patient in answering our questions and concerns, and I was very happy to see this plan go forward, and looking forward to seeing this Single Stream recycling go forward in the city of Moscow. Another big one that we work on pretty much every year now is a review of the City Streets' pesticides plan, Tyler Palmer from the City Streets came and gave a presentation along with, I believe it was Joe Evans from Shoal Brothers, they've been contracting with the city for many, many years, and really, the issue here is just to take a look at the pesticides that are being used, I'm using pesticides in the broad sense, that includes herbicides, insecticides, et cetera, et cetera, but what's being used, why it's being used, and really have Joe, as well as Tyler, explain the city's policy on pesticides use, and really, it's used in a very, in my opinion, sound environmental manner, when it's needed, not just spray and pray, and, you know, there are some strong opinions about pesticides, of course, and I like the fact that the city also has a no-spray policy, and I think that's very important, that's something that the SEC encourages people to do, too. If you do not want pesticides sprayed along your section of a roadway, for example, there is a no-spray list you can get on, that's, I think, being responsive to the citizens' concerns, and so, we have really no major issues with this whatsoever, Joe did go through and explain the new addition that's up there, a handwritten esplanade, I think is how you pronounce it, but why it's being used, and the idea is just to have alternatives, there are preferred uses for the sprays, and if they don't work, there are needs to have alternatives. So, again, no issues as much as just having a chance for a Citizens Commission to review this list and the policies in general, so I was glad to see that. Mayor's Earth Day Awards, this is a longstanding tradition in the city, and the intent of the awards is to recognize Moscow residents and organizations for activities conducive to environmental sustainability, this has been going on for a while, and Mayor Lambert has continued this tradition, and I applaud him for that. The SEC takes kind of the major role in soliciting nominations, and as well as organizing them, referring them to the mayor for his approval, and this is just a short list, I won't go through why everybody was nominated, if you were at the council meeting or read any of the press releases, you know about this, but again, I applaud the mayor, as well as the council, for continuing this tradition, it really is nice to see recognition where recognition is due, it's really important. Lastly, we staffed a commission table at the farmer's market, that may not sound like a lot, you sit out there and watch your friends go by, for the most part, but what I found from doing this is, it's really a great way to do outreach, to really listen to people that may not show up at the council, or excuse me, at the commission meetings at 7:00 PM on a Tuesday night, but people are at the farmer's market, and you have people coming by with all sorts of advice, all sorts of questions, and I think it's just another way to talk to the people that live in this city, find out what's on their minds, what they're concerned about, have some ideas on, you know, what to pursue as potential issues for the Sustainable Environment Commission, and I can tell you, by far, water was the biggest issue, so I'm glad to see the Water Conservation Plan go forward, certainly that problem is not licked, but it's one that's on people's minds. Did have one fellow had quite an interesting proposal that I'll share with you another day, if you have a couple billion dollars, I think we can make it work, but he would have solved all the Palouse's water problems, so you certainly meet some interesting people when you're sitting at a table at the farmer's market, but I think it's a great way to do outreach, not only for our commission, but I know, dealing with Amanda, other commissions are out there as well, and I think it's a very important function for a commission to do. I want to just share with you, as a final slide or two, the current roster, and thank and recognize everybody on there, I am the Chair, Scott Fidel has been the past Chair, and I travel quite a bit, and unfortunately have to miss a fair amount of the meetings, and Scott most ably fills in, as does Andy Boyd, Patrick Johnson is a law student right now, he'll be on there for another year or two, Daniel Sitter unfortunately is leaving us this summer, Keegan, as you all know, is a sustainability intern, we're very fortunate as a Citizens Commission to have high school and university presence on there, I really applaud young people showing up, when I was a high school and a college kid, I didn't even know what council was, or any of these commissions, and so to have them show up, and not only be there, but to contribute, I think really speaks very highly of these young people. Luke Miller, and also, her name's not up there, but Aaron Ingram is another high school student, and they show up to meetings, and they are very, very active young people, which gives me hope for the future, I'm glad to see that. Ava is our UI person as well, we have one vacancy, and lastly, I want to thank Art as our council liaison, he really provides a lot of insight, when we have these wild ideas, he'll kind of rein us back in a little bit, saying, "Well, yeah, but," you know, little dose of reality, and then Tom Skalorn is our staff liaison, and he keeps me on the straight and narrow, and makes sure I'm not breaking too many rules, so I want to thank everybody that serves on the commission, we have some citizens that are quite involved that show up probably more regularly than I do at these meetings, and they provide great insight as well, and with that, I'll thank you for your attention, and then take any questions that you have.
Well, Steve, the Sustainable Environment Commission does wonderful work, and you brought up some key things, you talked about Nicole Baker doing her Water Conservation Plan last Wednesday, the first, in front of this group, and it was, it was really an excellent report, and a lot of good ideas, and we all know that, you know, that's an issue that we're going to have to come up with a solution and work on, and get done someday, and the thing of it is, is like you said, that if we had, the thing is, if we had all the money we needed, get an easy solution, we could get it, but it costs a lot of dough in order to do that, we all know that, but, point being made, I think we're getting closer, the realization is, someday we've got to do something, we know that, and so that's something that this body will be working for. So, thank you for your work. Art, you got some comments?
Yeah, as liaison, I'm really aware of how hard everybody on the commission works, and the good ideas that people come up with, and looking out not only for ways the city can go about its business better, but also reminding the rest of town, and this body in particular, and follow-up kind of ways of what it is that we should be doing, and watching out for issues that we may not be aware of, so everybody on there does a really bang-up job, and I'm really pleased to be associated with this commission.
Well, I applaud not only our commission, of course, but the others, I'm quite familiar with a few of the others, and I think it's great that we have so many involved citizens that care about the city, that's important. All right, well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Steve, and Tom, thank you, sir.
All right, this could be dangerous, I'm going to try and turn this thing off. No, that one didn't do it. Tom? I'm sure which one it is. Oh, let's see. Hey, it did it.
Yeah, there you go.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, item number five, Single Stream Curbside Recycling Report, Mr. Tim Davis is going to come up and tell us what color cans we're going to be getting here before or to off along in the future. How are you, Tim?
I'm doing good, thanks for having me. I'm just going to give a brief update this evening on where we're at, and we'll go from Mailers were sent out on May 6th explaining some of the basic changes that will be coming with the new Single Stream curbside recycling program. Along with that mailer was a detachable signup sheet for the program, so folks could pick their cart size, and we included a prepaid return envelope, that they could send that back to City Hall, and we put together a brochure listing acceptable and prohibitive materials that will be included with the new Single Stream program. Customers were asked to respond back with their signup portion of that mailer back to us by June 15th, we're still getting a few coming in, but for the most part, we got them all returned. To date, we have received signup sheets, which resulted in a 63% participation rate for the single-family category, and 40% participation from the apartment category, which I was pretty happy with. I'm still waiting to hear back from a number of the larger property management companies that have not responded with their cart numbers as of yet. We are anticipating that the participation rates will continue to climb, especially in that apartment category. We anticipated that, being new to apartments, that it may start out rather slow, but we've got a good number of them that have returned responses. We also held an informational meeting on May 13th to further explain the new Single Stream recycling program to the apartment owners and property management companies. I, along with Andy Boyd and Sandy Crooks from LeTas Sanitation, Moscow Recycling fielded questions at the end of the meeting as well. The meeting was attended by 10 representatives from various apartments and property management companies. Counselor Beckey and Steed also attended that meeting. Due to what I felt was a small attendance at that meeting, I followed up with phone calls to a good number of property management companies, and that resulted in several more folks getting more information that didn't really understand, or didn't have time to make it to that meeting. I've also conducted many site visits to apartment complexes to assist with cart placement locations and recommendations for numbers of carts that they may need to get started at, given locations. That was a big concern with a lot of the apartments, is there's a lack of parking in a lot of locations, and they were concerned about where to place carts, and how many they needed, and so on and so forth, so I've been working with folks on that as well. The two 20-yard glass collection roll-off containers were ordered, and they are anticipated to arrive the first or second week in August. We've also secured an additional glass drop-off location, which we talked about early on in some of the early meetings, and that's going to be located out at the old Gilbert Auto Lot, directly behind Spence Hardware. Brian Spence purchased that building and property, and is going to allow us to park one of the drop-off boxes out there, and then, of course, we'll still be accepting the glass down at the recycle center. Shortly after the glass collection containers arrive, we'll place that glass container at the new site, and we will discontinue picking up glass at the curb before actually implementing the Single Stream. This will give us about six or seven weeks prior to the implementation of the new Single Stream program, for folks to get adjusted to glass no longer being accepted at the curb, or collected at the curb, excuse me. The Single Stream roll carts are ordered, and we anticipate them also to start showing up in mid-August. The new carts are green granite in color, we were able to get the granite for the same price as the plain color, they're really kind of a contemporary looking, they've got the speckles in them, and they don't show the wear and tear on them, I think they're going to look real nice. The carts will have black lids, lids are also going to have embossed label listing the acceptable and prohibitive materials right on top of the lid, and they'll be a little more generalized list than what we sent out, but it'll touch on most of the things. LeTas Sanitation anticipates that distribution of the new carts will take approximately four to five weeks, and my best projection at this point for implementation of the new Single Stream recycling program would be late September to possibly the first of October, if everything goes as scheduled. Garbage will continue to be picked up every week, once this is implemented, but once we get those new Single Stream carts out there, and we begin the program, the recycling will start going every other week. We'll do single-family one week, and then on alternating weeks, they'll do the apartment Collection schedules, we're also working on schedules and calendars that will be handed out in a packet when the carts are delivered, we'll be putting out an informational packet like we did when we converted the carts with the garbage collection, just some basic instructions, how to place them, how to keep them away from obstacles, again, we'll put that accepted and prohibitive list in there, and what I'd like to do is make a calendar, and we'll have single families on a one-colored week, and apartments on another colored week, and then we can also list those holidays, when collection may be a day late, we get a lot of phone calls on that. The other thing I'd like to do is, along with those schedules, is maybe make up some, like refrigerator calendars, just for reminders for folks to throw on the fridge, or a back cabinet, or something, so they can remember, and I think once we get rolling, and people get used to it, that it will work out just fine. With that, I'll field any questions.
Dan?
So, Tim, you said that you had a response back from 63% of the single-family that we sent it out to, how does that compare with the current single-family use, as far as what we have, what they, or do you have that?
I don't have any scientific numbers, Dan, but last summer, when we first started talking about Single Stream, I was curious for myself, because we really didn't know what participation rates we were seeing out there, and we did a seven or eight-week pilot, and it looked like we were having about 30% set outs.
So, we're basically doubling right now?
And that's right on track with what we were seeing with the other communities that I polled, you know, Lewiston, and Spokane, and Polma, and Corlaine.
And all that's coming out of the waste stream, so that's the good part of this whole thing. Thanks.
Walter?
Tim, following up on Dan's question, when you look at over 60% single-family, and add a brand-new 40% of apartments, and possibly more, is that in line with your pro forma? When you tried to estimate the cost and revenue on this program, were you using about those numbers, or, I remember, I remember how well you did in estimating what we're going to recapture from the abuse of the tag system on the waste side, so how were these numbers looking compared to what you?
I estimated that we would be around 70% with the single-family, which I think we'll probably hit, and I estimate it at 60% with the apartments, which I think we'll hit.
So, we're not out of line?
No.
Okay. And if I may, one other question, when you talk about picking up every other week, in other words, single-family one week, apartments the next, that's entire city, the city will not be broken up into zones or regions, or?
No, the single-family folks will...
The entire town will be one week?
Exactly.
Okay, and then the entire town for apartments?
And that will be, for the single-family folks, it will be the same day as their garbage collection, so it'll just be every other week on the recycling.
Okay. Other questions for Tim? Thank you for the report, Tim, good job.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing it. Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, which is a public hearing. Proposed amendments to Title IV, Chapter III, and the Legacy Crossing Design Guidelines to amend off-street parking and window-opening requirements, Michael Ray will present. Hi, Mike.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Take me a sec to pull up the presentation. Steve may have set me up here.
There we go.
So, before you tonight, we have proposed amendments, ordinance and a resolution for off-street parking in the window area, amendments for legacy crossing redevelopment area, and so, just to give a brief recap of what we did there, in 2012, Legacy Crossing Redevelopment Area, implementing, implemented three elements, first was the Urban Mixed Commercial zoning district, we also had the Legacy Crossing Design Guidelines and the overlay district. The Urban Mixed Commercial zoning district really had all the allowed uses, building heights, setbacks, limitations on uses, things of that nature. Design Guidelines had building facade elements, major pedestrian right-of-ways, traffic right-of-ways, things of that nature implemented into the plan, and then the overlay district was a way to convey the design guidelines, and so all three of those elements work in concert together. Really, we had the first chance to do a dry run with the Urban Renewal Agency, issued a RFP last year for three projects on the corner of Sixth and Jackson. During that review, we had identified a couple of areas of the design guidelines that could use some minor tweaking, the first was the off-street parking, within the Urban Mixed Commercial zoning district, we have special off-street parking requirements for the urban nature of Urban Mixed Commercial, and so, the current requirements are really 50% of what's required within the use table. Within the design guidelines, we also have off-street parking requirements as well, a lot of those exempted out, office and retail uses as providing off-street parking, residential is one per dwelling unit, and then we have other requirements for assembly areas and medical offices. So, really, just avoiding the inconsistency between the two regulations, you have it one in the Urban Mixed Commercial, and one in the design guidelines, that could cause some confusion to people working with the requirements, and so, what we're proposing to do is shift the table from the design guidelines into the Urban Mixed Commercial Zone, it's going to be the same table as the design guidelines with minor tweak, and that's going to be to amend the residential, to do 50% of what's required by the code, and so, that would be the off-street parking. The other area that we had identified was the window-opening area requirements, and so anytime you have buildings that have ground floors adjacent to major streets or pedestrian ways, you're required to have a certain area of window opening, and it's 50 to 85%. Well, staff was a little shocked when we ended up reviewing the proposals, and most of them met the 50% to 85% requirement, but whereas you looked at maybe a facade elevation, and it would appear that it was maybe around 60 to 65%, once we did the calculations, it actually came out to be somewhere around 50 to 55%. So, just looking at the number of allowed uses within Urban Mixed Commercial Zone, you're not always going to have retail on the ground floor, you could have medical office, you could have residential, and then the recent market analysis of that area indicating that you, you know, probably a high market for residential, and some office uses, I thought that we'd tweak that slightly into allow 35, as low as 35% for some of those other uses, and this just provides a little bit of flexibility for developments that may not have retail on the ground floor, and so, that's really the crux of the amendments before you tonight. Planning and zoning did conduct a public hearing, and that happened on May 13th, and they recommended approval of the ordinance, as well as the resolution as presented. and they recommended approval of the ordinance, as well as the resolution as presented. And staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and after considering any testimony, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that'd be read by title and published by summary. Uh, and if the ordinance is approved, to approve the resolution. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Michael.
All right.
Uh, just one, and I think it's in there, but I wanna double check. Does the stipulation that the maximum parking still stay at a hundred percent level, as opposed to going to the Black Friday, a hundred and fifty percent overbuild of parking areas?
Yeah, there's no change to that, so that still remains the same. This is, would just be affecting the minimum parking requirement.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mike, I've commented before that I'm not a zoning guy. I don't know whether I do it in, with pride, or shame, but, anyway, I'm not. Um, you've got the Urban Mixed Commercial zoning, uh, district, and the Legacy Crossing Overlay Zone. Help me, do those, the overlay zone literally overlays the urban mix?
Correct. Yeah, if you think of it as layers, we have all the underlying zoning districts. Well, the, the overlay district is a special overlay that just affects the Legacy Crossing area. So, you could have Urban Mixed Commercial in some other area of town. It could be like R1, you know, somewhere else. But, uh, it's just specifically the Legacy Crossing overlay, just for the area of Legacy Crossing that we had, you know...
And, if I may? And the changes that you're proposing tonight have to do within the Urban Mixed Commercial Zone, not the Overlay Zone? Even though the Overlay Zone may be part of that?
Uh, well, the, the overlay zone is the conduit for the design guidelines. And so, I'm, we're proposing to change certain aspects of the design guidelines...
Which are carried to certain places by the, the...
Correct. Through the overlay.
Legacy Crossing Overlay Zone.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's a little better.
Okay, other questions from you?
Still not clear, but...
Thank you, Mike. I'm gonna open the public hearing now, uh, to hear testimony in favor of this ordinance Saying non-rush of the podium, any general comments or opposition to this? With that, I close the public hearing at seven thirty-eight, discussion amongst the Dan, you guys heard this on the twenty-second of June, in the admin.
We did. And with that, um, I would make a motion that we go ahead and approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that be read by title and published by summary.
Second that motion? Okay, we've got a motion made by Dan, a second by Jim Boland, to approve the ordinance for the proposed amendments to Title IV, Chapter III, and the Legacy Crossing Design Guidelines to amend the off-street parking and the window opening regulations or requirements. Walter, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that goes by six to zero. Now, we have, is this ordinance twenty fifteen-ten?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good guess. Okay, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash ten, an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapter III, for the modification of the off-street parking requirements, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Now, we have a resolution that we need to discuss. It's on the backside. Uh, this, approve this. And this has to do with, uh, some of the things that Walter brought up about authorizing the amendment of the crossing of the Overlay District designs?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve the resolution that, uh, that accepts the Legacy Crossing Design, Overlay Zone Design Guidelines.
I'll second. Okay, we got a motion by Dan, and a second by John, uh, to approve the resolution. We'll start with you, John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay. And we'll move on to item number seven, which is another public hearing. And this is a proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter III, to allow additional outdoor uses within the commercial zoning districts. And Mike, you have the floor and the podium again, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. So, what we'll be discussing tonight is an ordinance, uh, for outdoor uses in certain commercial zoning districts, uh, within the zoning code. And, uh, just to give you a little bit of background, Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this in fall of last year. Uh, really was a, a result of staff being proactive on some type of nuisance complaint. But they ended up reviewing the outdoor uses within, uh, certain commercial zones. Within the zoning code, you have certain limitations on uses under each zoning district, and, uh, certain commercial zones require, uh, all uses to be conducted wholly and entirely within enclosed buildings. But then they have a list that exempts out certain, you know, allowable uses that are allowed to be outside. And so, the commission had reviewed these back then, and identified that, uh, there were a few that maybe should be added to the list of exemptions. The first one was really outdoor seating for restaurants. Uh, and they noticed that within the neighborhood business zone, uh, they allow restaurants, uh, within that zone, but they specifically exclude outdoor, uh, seating areas for those restaurants. And the commission thought that that was a little strange, to allow restaurants, but not to allow any type of, uh, outdoor seating, which may be adjacent to, uh, an arterial street, like neighborhood business is typically adjacent to, or, uh, you know, landscaped residential areas where it's nice to, to be able to sit outside, maybe next to a park, uh, areas of that nature. And then there was also some minor cleanup actions. Uh, community garden, market garden, when we did that urban ag ordinance, uh, you know, ended up not including that on, on loose lists of, uh, exempted outdoor uses. And of course, you know, with, with those gardening-type uses, you're gonna have some outdoor, uh, activity. And so, we just thought we'd clean that up there and add that to the list. Uh, and then, kind of changing the structure of the neighborhood business zone, uh, it was a little bit different than, than other zones, and we added, uh, limitations on uses, and said that it had, all uses had to be conducted wholly and entirely within, uh, enclosed buildings, and then just added, uh, the, the outdoor, uh, restaurant seating, community garden, market garden, and then, uh, like loading areas for daycares and schools, uh, uses of that nature. Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing on the ordinance, and that happened on May thirteenth of this year, and they recommended approval, uh, as presented. And staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and after considering any testimony, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that'd be read by title and published by summary. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Questions for Mike? Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I'm, I'm, I'm a little puzzled by the genesis of this. It, the way the staff report reads, it started from an outdoor concert in a motor business zone?
Oh, it was actually central business.
Central, central business zone. And Planning and Zoning was asked, in, in this, it says, quote, "to discuss the possibility of regulating more outdoor uses in commercial zones." That sounds to me like asked to look at being more restrictive.
Correct, yeah. Staff thought we'd be proactive, and yeah, bringing this to Planning and Zoning Commission to see if they were interested in, uh, you know, adding more...
In being more restrictive.
More restricted to some outdoor, you know, maybe adding outdoor concert venues to the list of, uh, restricted, uh, outdoor activity.
Okay. But, having worked through it, they ended up presenting what tonight appears to me be, being less restrictive in neighborhood business. Am I, am I following things correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Dan?
For Rod, being a former prosecutor, could you, do you feel that the outdoor concerts, and basically, we're talking about on their property, can be limited enough by the current noise ordinance, and this really has no effect on that? But, because they figured that the, the current noise ordinance took care of whatever complaints were happening, and, and got that basically shut down?
Um, that's my understanding how it's been working. Uh, the chief, I think he reported to that, um, that they haven't had any problems when they have noise complaints, to go out there and shut down those problem areas, especially that concert that initiated this review. So, I think our noise ordinance seems to work very well, and has solved a lot of problems in this community.
Okay. Other questions? John?
Not a question, more of a, just a point, is that, uh, Planning and Zoning, and with the help of the, uh, planning department, looked at the whole thing, and the first thing they came up with was that, uh, the ordinance that we have concerning noise, and concerning, uh, outdoor counsel, outdoor concerts, is, uh, plenty good enough to deal with the situation that we have. But, as stated, as looking a little bit further into it, it did not cover all of the things that should have been covered, or could have been covered, within some of the other areas that we have. That's the reason that this particular document is in front of you, and that's also the reason that the, um, Planning and Zoning came up with, actually, the city staff came up, and Planning and Zoning approved, uh, this change, so that we're just kind of cleaning up an issue, and at the same time, saying that the noise issue that we have now, that the police, police chief, Rod, are working with, uh, is adequate to the task. I think all it did was basically clean up some issues, and, uh, make everything that we're doing a little bit more clear, as far as the enforcement of the ordinance.
Okay, with that, thank you, Mike. I will open the public hearing. It's seven forty-eight, and I would take, uh, approval from folks, disapproval from folks, or general comments from folks at this time.
Excited group out there.
Well, I thought I'd just kind of group them together, and gave you just a smorgasbord of being able to come up, and I, without I seeing it, so I'll close the public hearing at seven forty-nine. And, Dan, this was brought in front of, uh, the admin as well on June twenty-second.
Yeah, you know, we basically just reviewed it, knowing that it was coming to full council. Um, and, you know, even up, up till today, still, you know, along with Walter, trying to figure out how we got here. And I, I think I'm picking up what they're putting down. Uh, we're trying to basically, it looks like, make all these, uh, business areas have the, the same allowable uses. You know, we have seating in our central business district downtown, along Main Street, outdoor seating for restaurants, so this is allowing it at those neighborhood businesses. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that's, that's what I'm seeing there, and, and I don't really see, you know, I thought I saw something wrong with it, but I really don't now. But, I think we can continue discussion.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, from, from staff's standpoint, how do you view neighborhood business related to other commercial business zones?
Well...
Well, I presume it's, it's done in the code, but what, what's the perception of how it's supposed to operate? Where is it located?
Yeah. Most neighborhood business zones are located along collectors or arterials, so there is a high level of traffic activity adjacent to those zones. Uh, but it is serving as a buffer between those areas and residential areas. So, it's intended to serve, uh, certain sectors of residential areas. So, maybe the northeast corner of, of town, where you may have to travel greater distances to Safeway, or, you know, West Pullman Road, in order to, uh, get commercial services. Well, it's just intended for these pocket commercial, uh, activities that are intended to serve the adjacent neighborhood. Uh, is really the intent of the, the neighborhood business zone.
Walter?
And apparently, staff feels that allowing outdoor, certain outdoor uses adjacent to those neighborhoods will not be creating problems.
Well, it's, they're gonna be restaurants, and so, you know, usually restaurants end up, uh, closing up at nine or ten AM. Uh, it's, you know, it'd be similar to, uh, rest, outdoor restaurant seating in, in other areas, where you have it directly adjacent to residential, uh, zones and neighborhoods. It's usually small in scale. This is an example of, uh, Salt Lake City area, there's a park...
I was gonna ask where that was in Moscow.
Yeah, right, right across the street. And so, this, you have a, kind of a, not really a major roadway, but a, you know, probably a collector's street there. They have a small outdoor seating area here. It's mainly indoors, but there is a, a small outdoor patio area. And this is a duplex over here, you have an adjacent residential neighborhood. You may have been to, to Hyde Park neighborhood in Boise. It's just these small-scale, you know, just the nature of the neighborhood business zone, you're not gonna have a, a really large restaurant. They're usually gonna be smaller in scale, and, uh, it would just be, uh, outdoor seating incidental to those restaurants. And these are just, um, you know, other examples, just small outdoor patios, uh, that aren't gonna generate a whole lot of noise, when they're adjacent to, uh, residential areas. Another example of Hyde Park area, you've got two restaurants with outdoor seating here, and then it transitions right into the residential, uh, area. And so, you know, usually, with the buffers that are required of our code, uh, there is a quite substantial amount of landscaping between different zones, and anytime you have a commercial zone adjacent to a residential zone, uh, you're gonna have one of those type A, type B buffers, which are gonna deaden the noise. And then just the inherent nature of, uh, restaurants are, you know, gonna close nine to ten o'clock, and so, it, it, um, we don't perceive it as, as being a detriment to the adjacent residential areas.
Thank you.
All right, you had a question?
Yeah, not really a question, just a comment, that every time we pass one of these ordinances or resolutions, we gotta know that we are, chances of getting it exactly right the first time out the gate are not great, and so, we can always expect to have a few of these cleanups to go along to allow better implementation of what the intent of the original ordinance was all about. And I think this is a fine example of one of those.
Mike, along with the same questions of, uh, outdoor seating for restaurants, is there, is, what type of guidelines are in place to control the size of the outdoor seating? Is there a percentage of square footage pertaining to the business? How is that, supposing a, a, a small restaurant was sitting on a rather large lot, and they had room to put in a very large outdoor seating? I mean, what, what controls that?
Well, we don't have any type of limitations in the code, but building code's gonna dictate that. So, depending upon the size of the space, the number of occupants, they may be restricted. Um, if you look at, uh, the anchor on Main, you'll notice that they, they have very few tables out there in the outdoor patio area. You know, that could be a result of the, the occupancy classification, uh, of the building. And I believe in talking with the building code, uh, there are, you know, those limitations. But there isn't any within the zoning code about, it can only be forty percent of the, the restaurant size. There, just nothing.
Jim?
I think it's important to point out that the neighborhood zoning, neighborhood business district does not allow bars. So, if, you know, that would, that would be a concern that would be raised, if you, you can have outdoor seating next to, uh, a residential area, that you, that might cause a noise issue if, if there was a bar in that situation, but we don't allow that. So, that's probably something that should be out front here, that we're not allowing outdoor seating for a restaurant that's gonna evolve into, uh, a noisy outdoor situation that you might, might see with a tavern, or something like that.
Correct, it would just apply to restaurants.
Okay. Dan?
Well, with that, I would make a motion that we, uh, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings that be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Dan, and a second by Wayne, uh, to approve the ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three separate, uh, three complete and separate readings, and that'd be read by title and published by summary. And this is on a proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter III, to allow additional outdoor uses within commercial zones. Walter, I'll start the roll with you.
Aye.
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 Six oh, and we have another ordinance here. Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash eleven. An ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapter III, for the addition of certain outdoor uses within commercial zoning districts, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication... force and effective from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Thank you, Mike. And we will move on to item number eight, which is resolution of the city of Moscow inter-fund investment for airport realignment. Don Palmer is here to give a presentation. Good evening, Don.
Good evening. Tonight I'm bringing forth a resolution to provide a funding mechanism for the grant match for the airport realignment from Moscow Pullman Airport. A way of background, city councils had, signed a joint operations agreement back in 2014. We have, had a long history of, with the airport dating back to the seventies and probably even before them, that's what I could find recently. We had financial discussions about this last July, a year ago, and we affirmed that through our budget process in the FY 2015 budget by way of providing a property tax pledge for 10 years. And this is the first year of that. We've started receiving those funds in the January tax turnover this year and then again end of this month we'll receive another. So that provides the funding for what, this resolution that I'm proposing tonight, which is to try and draw forth a mechanism for inter-fund investments into the general fund and providing about half a million dollars towards the city of Pullman is what this is really trying to do. And what my cash flow statement was a year ago was a half a million for the first five years and then repayment continuing on through that. But we'll be receiving quarter million dollars each year in the way of property tax. So this funding is just to try and have the other funds provide investments. There's some key provisions that I've called out in the resolution that I'll find. But we've talked about this on June 22 at the Public Works Finance meeting and there were some discussions about the $119 million funding for the grant and the match that's, that's set at 8.125%, which is $9,668,750. And we also discussed at that meeting that two and a half million dollars would come from the city of Pullman and two and a half million dollars would come from, from us, the city of Moscow as co-sponsors. And so then the discussion came about, about what about the remaining 4.668, $4,668,750, which is the other portion of that match. Since that time, our administration from both cities have met a couple of times, the mayors have met a couple of times. And from my understanding, and I'll allow them to talk about that in just a moment, that we've met those satisfactions in terms of, with pretty high regard about where we're positioning ourselves. So Gary, you want to talk about that at all?
For me?
Sure, go ahead, Gary.
I'll let, the mayor can talk about his interaction with this. As the council knows, this was brought up to council last July. We had actually a special budget workshop on August 4th of 2014 during which time council authorized to propose the funding of the $2.5 million participation, of grant participation for the FAA grant match. The project originally started out at $89 million. Of course, it's a multi-year project and as we all know, there are, there is construction inflation and other things that occur during a project of that length. So realistically, the airport board requested the project engineers who were scoping the project for what they thought would be a maximum out of pocket to complete the project. And that's where the 119 million came in. As Bill, or as Don reported to Public Works Finance Committee, you'll recall that the congressional delegation for both Washington and Idaho was lobbied by our mayors and city councils and other legislators to reduce the match amount for the state of Washington, which is where the airport's located, even though it's recognized as one of seven commercial airfields for the state of Idaho. And the Washington grant match is 10%. The state of Idaho's grant match, FAA grant match, is 5%. It's a function of the amount of tribal and federal land that is held in those respective states. Of course, we tried to lobby them to give us the 5%. They said, well, we'll give you a hybrid. And that's where the 8.125 came from. So that being said, as Don indicated, the maximum under that 119 million would be $9.96 million. At that time, Mayor Lambert asked Don and I to work through and determine what could be done by the city of Moscow reasonably without seriously impacting city of Moscow operations. We did that and that's, you'll recall, last August 4th when that was brought forward. And as Don indicated, there was a forgone amount of property taxes that was taken along with new construction last year amounting to $250,000. The idea was because it was a five-year project, we would need to take care of our five-year, or our $2.5 million obligation within that five-year period. We did not have sufficient capacity without impacting operations to take the full $500,000 per year of taxes. So Don suggested that we could do some inter-fund borrowing, which would allow us to utilize the $250,000 tax increase of forgone amount and borrowing from pools of money that the city has in reserve from the enterprise funds, the payroll service funds, so on and so forth. Funds that are necessary to have but are not being utilized at the time. And utilize those funds to meet that $500,000 a year obligation for five years. Then at the end of that five-year period, the $250,000 continuing tax would pay those funds back. And I believe it was 3% returned, Don?
I think, I believe I used two and a half percent.
2.5%, which is significantly above the amount that is being paid by the local government investment pool from, by the state of Idaho. So it seemed to make sense if the council wanted to move forward with that. Council gave us that direction. We integrated those numbers into the budget and we, in this budget that you will see on the 13th, you'll also see there is a continuing obligation of a half a million dollars in each budget year for the ensuing four years. So that being said, the discussion of who will assist with this, I'll let the mayor discuss that. However, we had always anticipated that as sponsors of the FAA grant, that the city of Moscow and the city of Pullman would be the main sponsors and that's why the FAA requires the cities to sign the grant. We are responsible for grants that we accept. We have other players, Washington State University, University of Idaho, Latah County, Whitman County, Port of Whitman, and perhaps hopefully some private users will also participate in that. So as Don said, we have about $4.6 million that we need in addition if the project goes to the maximum 119 million. Our engineers keep telling us that they don't believe it will go that high and they've been encouraged to keep those costs as low as possible. That being said, the mayor, I know Mayor Lambert has approached entities, goes, our governmental entities on this side, University of Idaho and Latah County, and discussions are continuing. And Mayor Johnson and Mark Workman are approaching Washington State University, the Port of Whitman, and Whitman County, as well as any private folks on their side to determine their level of commitment as well. They don't have their names on the bottom line at this time. However, we just met with them last week. I'll let the mayor comment about that, but we were very encouraged by what we heard.
With that, as we're going along here, this is an ongoing process that's going to happen for a number of years. So next year, we're going to have another resolution just like this. And we're going to have that for a number of years until this thing goes through because this project is going to be a five, six-year project. We all know that. With that being said, I met with President Staben, Matt from the university last week and he has committed to a half a million dollars towards this project and will give us a letter of support on that, Gary. We know that Washington State University is going to give a million bucks to this plan. They are, right now, we're in the middle of working on some land agreements with Washington State University. So it's going to take a few months for that to work through. We know that Washington State Transportation Department has given $250,000 a year, year over year for us towards this project. As Gary had said, I had talked to Chair of County Commissioners Dick Walliser and Tom Lamar. Their budget process, similar to our budget process, we know we're going to get some kind of funding out of them. Haven't got a commitment for money yet, but we will know that in September. We also have some private donations that are going to be coming along as well. And I guess got to tell you, I'm confident. We talked about the Port of Whitman and Whitman County as well. I'm not concerned about where we're headed with this. It's going to take, it's not going to be something that's going to happen overnight. It's going to be an ongoing process that we've got to work through. And we've got a number of players that are on board with this. Yes, the city of Moscow and the city of Pullman, as far as the FAA is concerned, they're the only two sponsors that they're dealing with. But we've got other entities that are very much in this. And how this thing will work and make it happen is to have all those entities working together. And I completely believe we've got that. So, John?
Bill, just to clarify, when we went through this a year ago, we were assured as a council that no checks would be written until there was some bona fides from other places. This agreement here keeps that in mind, doesn't it?
Well, the, the way that it's understood, the funding, our funding goes into like an escrow, John, because the city of Pullman will be, the city that will be making the payments. So the monies will be funneled through the various entities to the city of Pullman in an escrow account for this very thing. That's how it works.
Well, yeah.
To pay off, to pay for the FAA.
If for, if something happens, who knows what? And things don't work out, the money that the city of Moscow puts in cannot just be spent.
It will not disappear if it hasn't been spent, John, if something goes awry.
I just, I swear, I thought it was, Bill, I just wanted to make sure.
Those are the what ifs you can run into, but Gary, you want to comment on that?
Yeah. Tony, being the executive director of the Pullman Moscow Airport is here. The way it's being explained to us by both Tony and by the financing agent who's been retained by the airport board is that the, the funds will come in a series of grants. And as the council has signed over the years, has authorized various grants, in fact, there will be a grant coming through here in just a couple of weeks, I believe for snow removal equipment. Tony, or that's been done already?
That's been...
Okay, that's, council authorized that as well. But these series of grants are for different phases of the project. So every time that a grant is accepted, the sponsors sign it, that money is obligated. And then as the next grant comes up, and if the money is not there, then you don't authorize payment. You don't sign the grant. Now, there are timing issues here and it would be nice to be able to tell you categorically that we have everybody's name on the bottom line, but as the mayor indicated, Washington State University is, and the consultants are currently working on some land that is necessary for the runway expansion and realignment. There are some folks who are waiting for some decisions to be made prior to coming forth with their commitment as well. As the mayor indicated, there are also other budget cycles. So is there a little bit of uncertainty? Absolutely, there's always a little bit of uncertainty. We, there will be a resolution, a further resolution coming forward from the airport board and the city of Moscow saying that the monies that we authorize to go to the airport board will be utilized by the airport board for this project and only for this project.
Walter?
Two weeks ago, the city of Pullman had not officially done anything officially on paper to create money for this project. Have they since, two weeks ago? Does anybody know?
We've been, it's been represented to us by the city administrator, Mark Workman, city supervisor, and Mayor Johnson that the city of Pullman, their council has approved 2.5 million, just as the city of Moscow has.
They had not, two weeks ago, I talked to Mark Workman. The council had not acted.
I'm telling you what we were told.
Has the council acted at Pullman?
Tony?
I don't know the answer.
Have you got any information? Could you come up to the podium, please? Being you're tied closer to the council from Pullman to ease Walter's concerns here.
So what the city of Pullman has done is there is $600,000 in an account right now that they've allocated to that account.
That money was not moved by the council. That money was moved by a finance director. And then it is, it was taken back, according to Mark Workman. The city council had not acted two weeks ago. I understand, to interrupt you, I understand the 600,000. It was moved out of their general fund to the airport fund by the finance director. And since that time, when he did that, it's now been moved back. Yeah, if anybody knows whether or not the city of Pullman council, who is the only one that can really do this, correct, Gary? I mean, the mayor can, can, can wish and promise, the city supervisor can desire, it's council action that matters, like here. I'm just trying to find out what has the city of Pullman done?
Well, I understand they had a meeting last Tuesday. I'm unsure what was done at that meeting. Maybe Tony has that information.
They accepted the grant. The pre-author is, and I have the grant for $16 million. They accepted that, which means they accepted the burden that goes with the 16 million. Pending in two weeks, this body making that same commitment. But as far as putting, actually putting money into a, setting aside allocating funds, they have not done that.
Okay.
But they allocate each time, as was explained by Gary, each time the grant is signed, they are allocating those funds. And they are the paying agents, so...
But, okay, but we have allocated two, two and a half million?
We have, every year the council has to authorize in their budget.
Subject to budget.
Yeah.
Subject to rolling budget.
Exactly. Council has, has authorized the commitment to the project, if you will.
Yeah. And I'm just not...
Art, you got a question?
Sure that, sure that the city of Pullman has taken a similar step. That's all, that's, that's the point I was trying to make.
I was going to say... I'm going to go to Art right now. Walter, I'll come back to you in a minute. You're going, you guys are going to be meeting with those people from Pullman here in two weeks. That'd be a good question if you ask those guys, Walter.
I'll be out of town.
Art?
I was just going to say that given the constraints of the budget cycles where Pullman's budget doesn't start until January, I wouldn't be too surprised in seeing little official action other than implicit commitments to us on this topic until they get closer to October when they start passing their budget. Somebody's got to be first here and somebody's got to take the first step. And in our budget cycle, that's the point we're now at. This is the Moscow City Council and Moscow's commitment to the airport. And I think that if we're the first ones out, it exhibits some leadership and some commitment to the project as well as larger commitment to the economic sustainability of the area.
Art is right on one thing. They have a different fiscal year in Pullman. It starts January, the same as the calendar year, offsetting from what ours starts in October. So that is correct. It's an offsetting budget year. Walter?
Thank you. We acted last August. Pullman's next budget cycle following our action was last January. They didn't. I don't know why. Maybe the mayor and the city supervisor's commitment is good enough for the council to say, okay. But they haven't. The U of I, WSU, Latah County, Whitman County, the Whitman County, Port of Whitman have all gone through budget cycles since we acted. And as far as I am aware, none of them have done anything within their budgets to set up this process. My concern is that we are the first out of the gate. And I'm afraid to get, we're going to get out there and look around and not going to be enough troops behind us.
In that case, the project goes away, the money comes back?
No, no, no. Money doesn't come back. I don't, I haven't heard anybody, some, the mayor, I think, said escrow.
It's in some type of an escrow.
Don, do you understand there's an official escrow being set up on this? I hadn't heard that.
Yeah.
You're writing, you're writing checks to the city of Pullman.
We're writing our checks to the city of Pullman. They have an airport fund.
A budget.
A budget. And they have a construction fund within that fund, which is a special, special revenue fund, just like our, our funds, our governmental funds. And that's where they spend their monies. And talking to Mark last week as well, you're absolutely correct. They took the financial, removed the 600,000 into their airport fund and then withdrew it. My understanding is Laura McAllohn, their city attorney, is drafting up a resolution for this coming city council meeting to, to...
for this coming city council meeting to, to, to put more meat into how the use of their funds are after we had our discussion with, or in line with our discussion. So as, as Gary and, and Mayor Lambert had pointed out, you don't have just the budget cycles that are moving parts, but you have a bunch of governing boards that are moving kind of simultaneous to this. And so I think we're all in the same sync of trying to get this accomplished. It's just that, you know, it's not one doing one first versus the other. Secondly, you're right, their budget, if they're, I remember talking with the previous finance director, Bill Maholland, and that 600,000 they talked about was going to be earmarked for the airport, which is what, you know, Tony is speaking to as well. And I think what they're trying to do now is just to provide it in a resolution format, which is what their city attorney's trying to do. So we're just trying to get this thing to where there's some sideboards on it, the financing's there, all the commitments are lined out. And so I think that's what we're trying to do by accomplishing this. This resolution that's before you tonight is just an interfund borrowing between investments so that we have the ability, long-term, to provide the funding. It isn't saying that we're gonna provide 2.5 million dollars tonight. It isn't saying we're providing 500,000 this month, okay? It's just that when they get their resolutions in order, we'll have ours already in place as well, and that's what we're trying to do. We're just trying to get our, our governing body lined out so that I have the ability, when that comes across, that we can exercise the financing mechanism in place that we've all been talking about for a year. Comments from somebody over, Jim?
When, let's move forward like we've done this, and we have a half a million dollars, and we're writing a check to the city of Pullman for 500,000 to put in the airport fund. Is that, does that have a contingency on it, that we're putting this in, and it, and the spending of that money by the city of Pullman is contingent upon the city of Pullman, city council matching that? Is there any string on the funds in that regard?
And we have not seen the resolutions being drafted by Laura McAlune, Pullman city attorney. The idea was, they were gonna draft the resolution and send it here. We will then probably modify it and utilize a like form for us. What the idea is, Jim, is exactly that, is that the city of Moscow's commitment is, is the same as the city of Pullman's commitment. One thing that's been talked about is, you know, the timing of this, and Walter makes a good point, and that is, if everybody's gonna play, they need to put money in at some point, or commitment at some point. You don't want to spend all the city of Moscow's money, and then Pullman will then kick in, and then somebody else will kick in. So we wanna lead the charge. Leading the charge, meaning provide leadership for the project. However, we wanna make sure that at least the city of Pullman is putting in the same amount as we are every time, as those other commitments keep getting gathered. So that's the idea. But you're exactly right. The city of Moscow's money is not the first out the door.
I, I don't have a problem with the funding mechanism, and I don't have a problem with us committing the money, but I do have a problem with, they can spend the money on whatever they want, and then say, sorry, we changed our mind.
They will not.
And then the whole project collapses, and we're out a half a million. We don't wanna, I, I think that's a fiduciary responsibility for everybody up here on the dais to, to know what's going on there.
Well, you make a good point, and I don't think that in recommending this to council that it does have to be in place. It's, it's one of those things that staff wants to make sure that we're doing the right thing in recommending it to you. As Don indicated, this is just the authorization to allow the interfund borrowing to go on. The commitment and how those monies get dispersed, we are still working on.
The process might actually help, put into place where, where Pullman actually functions for the airport, as the fiduciary responsibility and the financing runs through the city of Pullman, based on bars codes and Washington state law and all that other good stuff. When we spend money, let's say I spend a million dollars, we spend the million dollars. The FAA reimburses the 91.875% of that. Pullman is out the percentage immediately. They pay the check. The FAA is, it's a reimbursement mechanism. So we don't get federal funding first. We spend it out, the federal government gives us the 91.88, and then we, we move on to the next thing. And we go through the process that way. So each time that money is spent out on the project, the city of Pullman pulls from interfund loan, basically, because the airport doesn't have the cash in a, in account to be able to do that. They make a loan to the airport board, and they pull from that loan. This would be a very similar kind of a situation, but there would be a dedicated funding source that all funding from other partners from, or for the airport, the realignment itself goes into an account. It is separate, what has been explained to me is it is separate from the airport's actual account. So we have an operations budget that we operate under, and then I've got accounts for certain projects. This would be a specialized account that money specifically for the realignment would go into, that would not be attached to the airport's normal funding source.
If I may.
Gary?
And the process for receipt of monies and how it's going into city of Pullman's account, and that was a concern of ours as well. We're sending money to another state for a project that, although it's our regional airport as well, it's located in another state. Pullman's concern was even as their dealings with the airport board, they wanted to make sure that they had a resolution covering all of those contingencies. So the finance directors of both cities sat down and talked about, okay, how can we make this work so we can make sure that the money that we put in is matched, is accounted for, and it is used for the airport and for the airport alone in conformance with the resolution and the grant?
There's a point I wanna make to Jim here, too. Jim, this resolution will take effect, the money end of it, after October 1st. I mean, this isn't something like next week, the check goes over to Pullman. It's gonna be a while. This is part of the budget process. It's gonna be in front of the workshop on the 13th and 14th. Bill, well, as we're going along. I need to correct you on that. I'm actually, I mean, we have a quarter million dollars in the 15 budget, and I'm gonna request another quarter million dollars in amendment for this 15-year in anticipation that this would happen before September 30th of this year. Now, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but that's what I'm trying to do as far as appropriation-wise. But I'm pretty confident, based on the conversations you've had, Bill, and that Gary's had with Pullman and myself as well, that, that this will coalesce together. And that's my hope. And Tony's exactly right. There is a whole process, it's just one element of a, of a series of processes that's going to be occurring, as Gary outlined, and you've, you've seen, seen it before, is where, if they come up with 16 million dollars, and I think that's the first appropriation that we were talking about, that Pullman signed, and that you'll be seeing in two weeks, is that authorization, we have to have grant match for that. So this is coming together pretty quickly, and I'm pretty confident this will happen. You got a question, Dan?
Well, you know, if you go to what we actually resolve in this resolution, it doesn't even mention the airport. It just, it's resolving to allow us this interfund borrowing. I mean, we're gonna see more resolutions as this comes down the road. And if, if this whole thing goes away before we write a check, this resolution is mooted. But we gotta have it if we wanna move forward.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. It does mention the airport.
I'm talking in this last, therefore be it resolved.
I'm talking about the whereas's.
Right, the whereas's say all kinds of airport stuff.
Yeah, the, next to last whereas says, whereas as a sponsor with, with the city of Pullman pertaining to the airport, city's commitment will be to participate equally in the financial aspect with our partner to ensure the realignment occurs. Now, I don't know how binding that is on this or future councils, but that looks to me like a pretty good commitment to one-half of 8.125% of what's known now as 119 million dollars, which may or may not be the top number before this is all over. Gary made a point that, that is correct, but not, I don't think quite on point. He talks about, we have made authorizations with the airport for other grants either all the time or in the past, and that's correct. But everyone that I remember in the seven and a half years I've been on council have been to authorize the airport to use user fees as that match money, not city of Moscow money, which is, which is different. We're talking about city of Moscow money here.
And you're talking about a teeny portion in relationship to this project. I mean, you're talking about 119 million dollars versus a small amount in relationship, Walter, so.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you will never get me to tell the citizens of Moscow 2.5 million dollars is a small amount of money. Not gonna happen.
Okay. Appreciate your point, Walter. Anybody else got any comments? John, you got, you haven't?
No, I think Dan pretty succinctly put it together.
And Wang?
I can understand the contention, I can understand the concerns on this. I also understand that as taking a leadership role, we need to move forward with putting the resolutions together to create the funding mechanism, which is what this does. If we were committing ourselves to the entire 2.5 million in one shot, I would have a lot more concerns than what I have right now. At the same time, I also have the faith in the city of Pullman and in the other entities that this funding will come together. I think that we have enough controls in place here that by passing this resolution tonight, we can still maintain control of the 500,000 per year over the next five years. And so that if things start looking like we're having an issue, we can hold back on some of the funding. Tony, you said that the city of Pullman had, each phase, when the bill comes through, the city of Pullman, once, once, okay, once that portion of the grant has been accepted, then the work begins on that phase, correct?
Correct.
Okay. When that's done, or, and during that time, the contractor's saying, I need some money. And the city of Pullman is paying the contractor in its entirety.
Mm-hmm.
And only after all that is done, does the city of Pullman get reimbursed for the 90, what percent?
Right. Well, it's done in pieces. So this first grant is 16, and I have the grant offer, is the first grant offer is 15 million discretionary, 1 million entitlement, which is the airport's entitlement money we receive every year. So that grant will cover wetland mitigation, it covers design to a certain percent, it covers land acquisition, a Vista power line relocation, and there's a small earthwork package. Each one of those, as it becomes substantially complete, the contractor can make a request for payment. And our engineers and the consultants say, okay, yes, there's 50%. We can verify there's 50%. Here's construction reports. That all goes to the FAA. We approve the recommendation of payment from the consultant. The, the payment is made by the city of Pullman. They're out the money, it's gone. And then we go through Delphi, which is a computerized system with the FAA, and give them all of their invoices, all of the receipting, all of everything. They look at it, they concur, and a reimbursement comes to the city of Pullman. So the shortfall is there.
Minus, minus the eight point.
Minus the match.
Yeah.
And that is, and so each successive piece, when, as we're going through every grant, we do every grant this way, has a myriad of controls. There are many, many, many. So the first control piece is the acceptance of a grant, and then we move from there. But each successive step is controlled. We cannot, I can't get a reimbursement with, from the FAA by giving them a couple of pieces of paper. It's a significant amount of attachments and everything else. We have to show them, yes, the work was done, and here it is, here's pictures, here's construction reports. It was done in accordance with the FAA's standards with asphalt or land or the Uniform Relocation Act, or however we have to do it, because we have to follow all of the federal processes. We can't.
How much is this first grant?
It'll be 16 million.
Well, this, this first phase for 16 million is completed. We've sent 500,000. Pullman's writing a check.
For 1.3.
For 15 million, 500,000. They will then be reimbursed, the other percentage.
Right. 1.3 is the, is the match on 16.
Their money is, they're, they already have money out of their pocket, and if they're not getting reimbursed by the other entities, Pullman is the one that's really out on the hook, then it sounds like.
Correct.
The city of Pullman has to come up with, if, if they, all this work is done, they have to come up with the 15 million dollars or whatever out of their budget process somehow. So they are pretty well committed by signing that grant.
They signed it.
They, they've signed that, so whether or not we give them 500,000 or not, they're on the hook for 16 million.
Probably more than us.
Well, the percentage is 16 million.
Well, yeah, 90% of it or whatever, but still considerably more than 500,000.
Yep, you got it.
So whether or not the city council votes the match or not, they still have to pay the whole thing.
Well, they gotta.
Until they get to reimbursement.
Jim, they're just fronting it. By signing the grant, they're guaranteed reimbursement of the 91%, whatever it is. But yes, they have to find the cash somewhere in the, in the, in the basement of the city. Now, if I may, Tony, the city also accepted a 30 million grant?
No. So what happened with that, and you'll see that in two weeks?
Which one is the land? The 16 or the 30?
The land's in the 16. So what, what happened with the 30, and what Pullman passed last week, is when we went to the FAA and we were programmed for 16 million, 1 million entitlement, 15 million discretionary, and that is programmed through the next five, six years. What the FAA said was, apply for 30. The reason being is at the end of the year, September 27th rolls around, and airports all over the country that have projects, if they can't do the project, money starts dumping.
They plan on having some change laying around.
Right. And they, and they put it towards high priority projects, and they told us to be prepared to accept high priority project, which, if we can get the funding earlier, it always keeps the price down. It allows us to get our funding cycles ready for contractors and everything else, and actually put bids out there where we know we have the funding. So that's in anticipation of year-end monies in whatever form that may be.
Bill?
John?
I would make a motion that we approve the revolution authorizing the finance director to purchase interfund investments from other city funds that do not interrupt city operations or capital improvement plans.
I second that. Okay, John made a motion, and Art made his second, to approve the resolution authorizing the finance director to purchase interfund investments from other city funds without interruption to the city operation or capital improvements. Walter?
Just one final comment before this vote. Y'all heard Don say he intends to write a half million dollar check to the city of Pullman by September 30 of, of this year.
I don't think he said that. Don? I said we were gonna appropriate that, and if we, things coalesce together, yes, we'll be writing that check. But I, I have confidence that we would, but there's a lot of stuff that's gonna happen in between now and September 30th.
If I may, when Don says we're going to appropriate that, he means you people on the dais. Staff does not appropriate money.
Oh, that's true. With that, I'll start the vote with you, Walter.
No. Aye.
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 Okay, that resolution passed five to one. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Tony. Don, we'll move on now. Item number nine, city employee health insurance renewal. Gary Redner will be doing the presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor. What we have in your packet, as the council knows every year, and I hope my memorandum was at least somewhat self-explanatory. As you know, in the past, we have always tried to get our numbers for health insurance renewal, which is a benefit that's provided to city employees by the city of Moscow. Currently, that benefit for insurance covers health insurance for the employee and half of the cost of insurance that is extended to that employee's dependents. In the past, our, our plan year started November 1st of each ensuing year. So by the time we were preparing the budget in February and March and April, we had only November, December, January, February, maybe four, maybe five months of the plan year. There was no way that the insurance company could, who has been Regents Blue Cross, or re, excuse me, Regents Group, not Blue Cross, that's a different company.
Regents Blue Shield.
Regents Blue Shield of Idaho, used to be located in Lewiston, now they're in Salt Lake City. However, so what we would typically get is some, because they were assessing their risk, they would send us quotes of 15%, 18%. We would negotiate with them, we'd keep asking for updated numbers, because the insurance, they have two things that go into their consideration or used to. That was medical inflation, or what they call trend, and the experience or the use and the experience or the usage of the medical insurance by the employees. Those two things determined what your rate increase would be year to year. We've seen rate increases within the past 10 to 12 years. Some have been as high as 23%. We've had a couple of 10%, 13%, so on and so forth. But we've been very fortunate in the past several years that those increases have been right around 5% to 6%. I would note that, according to Helbling Employee Benefits, who is our health insurance consultant, that medical inflation is going up anywhere from 5% to 10% per year, depending on the service, and that prescription medications is going up at a much higher rate than that. So we're seeing quite a bit of inflation for medical care. In addition, the Affordable Care Act, which is now being, the cost of that is now being implemented through the state. We have, I don't want to say through the state, I'm sure legislators wouldn't appreciate that, but the federal government is dictating that we budget for that. And that alone, the costs affiliated with the Affordable Care Act are just shy of 4%. So we're seeing about a 4% inflationary factor just from the cost of the Affordable Care Act. Okay, bring us full circle. A year and a half ago, in the FY 2014 budget, we were able to negotiate with Regents to give us a 20-month extension or a 20-month plan year, if you will, that would remove the November 1st date and would move that date to August 1st, which means that by the time we start working on our budgets, we've got seven or eight months of experience, and we're able to start estimating a lot closer. So that renewal, I think, was 5.9% last time it was negotiated. So this year, we received a notice from Regents when we made inquiry of 12.1%, and that was based on experience, not just the ACA cost, but trend, inflation, all that sort of thing. But there was quite a bit of utilization by the employees' dependents. So we kept watching, kept watching, as is, was our instruction from council. We went out to RFP and asked other carriers. The two major carriers, other carriers in the area are Blue Cross and Pacific Source. They gave bids, if you will, or quotes for the same coverage or similar coverage. Some of it isn't as similar as we would have liked. Pacific Source came in higher than the Regents' quote. Blue Cross came in about 3% less, however, for a different type of package. So it's a different type of benefit than what is provided today. So Regents, in making their quote, also gave an alternative, alternative renewal option, which was discussed as well. That was given to us at 7.8%. We then requested that the other carriers were asked to respond to that alternative renewal option as well. They did. Pacific Source chose not to respond. Blue Cross did respond, and they came back at 4%. In the world of health insurance, apparently, they get to look at it several different times, because Regents came back and said, "Well, we can do it for 4.9% for medical. However, that also presupposes that you will also renew your vision and dental plans, which the actual inflationary factor was higher." So it worked out to 5% across the board. So what they've, what they have essentially indicated is that they will give the alternative renewal option, which if you go to, and I'm sorry, it is page, we can look at page 59 in your packets. I gave you a copy of a lot of the information that was provided, but suffice it to say that if you look under that column that says current, that is currently the benefit that is provided at this point, and the quote, which was given to us, a final quote for services as is at 11.2%. As we indicated, that was not something that as staff, we felt was a very good deal, so we then started the process I just explained. The alternative renewal is the differences in coverage as well as the cost, which was, as I indicated, is 4.9%. The difference, basically, and I've presented this to the Employee Benefits Committee, the Employee Advisory Committee, and made a presentation to an all-city employee meeting as well. Staff understands that the cost of health insurance is fluctuating, that it's going up, and like anyone else, they aren't particularly pleased that the benefit is changing. However, realistically, they understand that we have to seek out alternatives. So the changes, as you can see, are fairly, shifts a little bit of the risk to the employees. The deductible stays about the same. There are different deductibles for out-of-network. Obviously, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Pacific Source try to have healthcare providers negotiate with them for the cost of services, and that's what the health insurance pays for a service. And if it's in-network, the health insurance or the health provider accepts that as the cost of the service, and the patient does not pay any additional money. If you're out-of-network, they do not have an agreement, and Blue Cross, Regents, or Pacific Source will pay what they believe is the appropriate cost, and the patient then is responsible for anything over that. So obviously, staying in-network makes good sense. However, that is changing a little bit, that there will be additional deductible for out-of-network. I've just been informed by Helbling Employee Benefits that when you start talking about out-of-pocket maximums, they have actually reduced what they said would be the maximum, out-of-pocket maximum. So that helps us. I'm waiting for mailing on that.
Excuse me, Gary.
Yes?
It's going to be less than what's shown on page 59?
It is, because of the $3,000 prescription maximum down below, yes, it will affect it, Walter. I'm not sure exactly what that is, because I haven't received the mail.
So it's going to be less?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay. It will be no, it will be no more than what you see on this paper, but it's supposed to be less. The office visit has gone from $20 to $25. I would note that we have been, at least Helblings has indicated to us from Regents, that we have almost no one who goes out of network. So it's in-network that we're really looking at. So the experience of the city is that most employees stay within the network. One of the things in the big difference, as I indicated, Blue Cross's proposal was 4%, but they also had some coverages that they did not provide. For instance, they did not cover acupuncture or naturopath. We have a significant number of employees who participate in those sorts of treatment, but Blue Cross, they would not be covered. The copay for emergency room would go to $50 to $100. There is a maximum out-of-pocket for prescriptions at $3,000, which actually, a couple of years ago, we did have an out-of-pocket maximum for two or three years. That went away. So actually, as you paid more prescriptions, you paid the amount of money, but you could pay $5,000 out-of-pocket, and it's still, you would continue to pay the copay. So the changes are fairly minimal, although it puts a little bit of risk back on the employee, and that is 4.9% or 5% across the board. Understand that the Blue Cross was 1% less than Regents. We've been with the Regents for 20 years. I don't know how many times that Helblings and I have gone back to Regents and said, "Look, we've had a relationship for 20 years. Certainly, we fluctuate a little bit, but that long-term relationship has got to be worth something." I'm convinced that it's gotten us some fairly good or fairly reasonable adjustments over the years. So I would recommend that we continue with Regents at 5%. Additionally, besides the potential savings of 1%, when you switch health insurance carriers, you're switching a lot of things. It's a big administrative issue. Was this benefit paid under this plan year or the plan year with the new insurance company? It's just not worth it in discussing it with our former HR directors, both Leslie Moss and Debbie Klein Robertson and Helbling Employee Benefits. If the difference was 3%, probably, if you saw you were consistently getting higher rates, 3% might warrant a reduction if you could get an assurance in writing from the new carrier that they would not jack the rate on you the next year, and they're just not, what they call, buying the business. So with that, staff's recommendation, the amount of money that is proposed in the FY 2016 budget is for the 5% health insurance increase to continue coverage as outlined on that page 59.
I want to throw something out here, because when this first came up, this 11.2, and Gary and I talked about it originally, it was real close to 12%. Gary and staff, others, got this thing whittled down and spent countless hours negotiating and getting this thing where it belongs. And I think this is a pretty doggone good package. I don't know how many times Gary and I talked about this in his office, a number of different times, and looked through it, and I think it's a very reasonable thing. I just thought I'd throw that out to you guys, because, you know, it's saving a pretty good little chunk of dough there.
If I may, Your Honor, one thing I forgot to mention, when we went to that August 1st plan year, I know our budget year starts October 1st. We understood that in order to get some better predictability and better numbers to build the budget, that there would be that two months that would overlap into the previous budget year. We calculated that up on, what if it's 5%, what if it's 10%, what if it's 20%, and the council was, on the advice of staff, was comfortable in that two-month overlap. So that's what you're seeing today. When you authorize me to go ahead with this, we will execute the document. We will be under this plan starting August 1st, and we will be committing in this budget year to go with this plan, which we'll, we budgeted for in the next budget year.
Walter?
Did you see what I just marked on my iPad? Is that the reason for your comment just now?
I, I, I mean, you must be sending out brainwaves, Walter.
So we're okay budget-wise to cover the two months of additional 5%?
Yes, sir.
Other questions for Gary?
Dan? You know, having to deal with this in my regular gig and seeing the increases that we're seeing, I think that 5% is a hell of a swinging deal. So I would make a motion that we approve the alternate renewal option for health, dental, and vision insurance with Regents, as set in the accompanying memo, including the premium increase of 5%.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan and a second by Walter to approve the alternative renewal option for health, dental, vision, insurance with Regents Group, as more fully set in the accompanying memo that we have in front of us. I'll start with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, we move on to 6 to 0. Thank you, Gary, very much. Couple of things. We're going to have an executive session. Council president, would you like to forego reports to-
I have none, so I'm okay with foregoing them.
Okay, I would make, I'd like to adjourn, take a, make a motion to take a five-minute recess and reconvene an executive session per Idaho Code 74-Days-206. This meeting here will not reconvene once we're done.
I would make that motion.
Hold favor.
Aye.
Boom. Five-minute recess. It is 8:48.